Okay. Well, let's see how short an attorney can keep things.
This one's pretty good. It's pretty short.
Not paying by the minute, so.
Or by the word, no.
Oh, could you make the print a little smaller?
Sorry.
Yeah, that's it like that.
Satellite office.
That's right. So we got three minutes. Go ahead. You have three minutes. Just don't go here. Just don't go here. Here's the mic. So you're good? You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Break, we have to just. We can get a break, we have to as well?
Yeah.
Man, it's not this quiet. Regular council meeting.
Can we be heard?
Yeah. We don't need mics. Uh, where does Scott go? Where, you know where Scott went?
No.
Is, I guess, direction given, no action taken?
Let Scott in? Yeah, I'll get it. I'll get it. There's a trick to it. Gotta go fast. Yeah, it's gotta go fast.
So, direction given, okay. And... So, report out on closed session, direction given and no action taken. So, we will now open the regular council member, or the council, meeting. If you'd like to call this meeting to order, and if you'll stand, join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most loving God, we ask you to come to be with us tonight as we make decisions for the citizens of the town of Paradise. We ask your protection and care for all of our public safety personnel, all of our staff, and all of the people working to make our town back to what it was. Protect our forces who are working for our independence and our freedoms all over the world. Amen.
Melanie, roll call.
Roll call, Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Colleton.
Here.
Councilmember Lang.
Here.
Councilmember LaSalle.
Here.
And Mayor Crowder.
Here.
So before we move on, I've just got a couple housekeeping items I want to... But we're gonna just have a reminder of what the decorum is here in the council. So, speakers are allowed three minutes to speak, and when the time's up, please stop. When speaking, address the council only, not staff or audience. Keep comments respectful and language G-rated. After any of, any member of the public speaks on an issue, no clapping or booing. We want both sides of a discussion to be heard and not discouraged or embarrassed to speak due to the audience appearing to support or oppose what is being discussed. And I know that's kind of hard, but we, we just kind of need to have that happen. And then the last thing is inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant and/or town employee, will not be tolerated. And we really will thank you for your cooperation. So, item 1E. Representatives from Voices United in the Butte County Office of Education will accept a proclamation recognizing November as Homeless Youth Awareness Month. So, I believe there's somebody here to accept that, and if they want to come up, I will read the proclamation. So, whereas the California Department of Education reports there were 286,853 students experiencing homelessness statewide, including some 1,798 K through 12 students in Butte County enrolled during the 23-24 school year. And whereas approximately 25% of youth exiting foster care will experience homelessness, and whereas natural disaster and lack of affordable housing have exuberated youth homelessness across rural California, and whereas a high percentage of homeless youth have been physically, sexually, and/or emotionally abused by their guardians, and are frequently revictimized and exploited while living on the streets and shelters. And whereas, due to the lack of stable housing, homelessness, homeless youth face great difficulty in assessing, stabilizing, and succeeding in school, reducing the likelihood of successful graduation. And whereas the citizens of Paradise, California are the key to preventing youth homelessness by acting as mentors and role models for youth, guiding them towards available resources, productive choices, and creating opportunities for youth to successfully transition to adulthood. And now therefore, I, Steve Crowder, Mayor of the Town of Paradise, and the citizens of Paradise, California, by virtue of the authority vested in me to do, hereby proclaim November 2025 as Homeless and Runaway Youth Awareness Month in Paradise, California, in witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the Town of Paradise to be affixed heretofore into, in this 12th day of November 2025. And if you'd like to say anything, please.
No.
I guess not.
Okay. Well, thank you. So, 1F, Campfire Recovery Updates. Written reports are included in the agenda package. Colette Curtis, Recovery and Economic Development Director. Any questions for Colette?
I have one question for Colette. I was reading the report, and it said something about, I think it was referencing, was it Stage 4 Tree Program? That's the last one we did.
Category 4, yes. That is the last one.
And it talked about, you know, so many, but, so, and in talking to you offline, that program has been completed, right?
Yes, we are, we are completing that program. There's, you know, we're tying up all the loose ends at the end, but the, the trees have been removed.
The trees have all been removed.
It is substantially complete.
And so now it's all the paperwork to get the reimbursement.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mark Maddox, Public Works Director. Any questions for Mark?
Not a question, but a comment. Primarily ended, focused on DIAUS. I just want to remark, a couple of weeks ago, I sent Mark an email on a Sunday afternoon about some sidewalks that had lifted up from the tree roots below them on a route that the Phoenix 5K was going to run. And like I said, I sent the email out to Mark Sunday afternoon. Monday morning around 9 o'clock, I saw his crew out there grinding that down to make it safe. And I really appreciate the quick response. Totally unexpected, and very much appreciated, and primarily because my wife was one who tripped on it and fell down. Didn't hurt herself, but she fell, and we were concerned about the other runners and all that. So again, job well done, thank you, Mark. For you, please pass it on to your crew as well.
Will do, thank you so much.
Okay, Paradise Sewer Project Update. Mark?
Yes, good evening, Council and Mayor. I have a brief report on the Paradise Sewer Project. We do this every month to keep the community apprised of the current status of the project. In our, since direction was given in August to pursue a local version of the treatment facility, as well as a focused Phase 1 collection system, we've made a lot of progress. We have issued an RFQ, which later tonight, this evening, you'll consider awarding a contract for the design of a wastewater treatment facility. Since our previous update, we have officially terminated the progressive design-build contract, and we are working on reassignment of that contract. The termination of that PDB contract allows us to competitively bid the collection system along with the treatment facility at the time which the design is completed. Because of the evolution of the project no longer being regional, and for the sake of transparency, and to account for those changes, a decision was made by the council to go ahead and terminate that contract. So that work has been completed, and we are ongoing through the reassignment process and resuming design work with our team. We're also, in the last month, we've initiated contacts for right-of-entry agreements for environmental surveys at potential sites for the wastewater treatment facility. And then in the month ahead, again, we're looking to, tonight, to award a contract for the design of the treatment facility, including contract negotiations here to come. I also mentioned that we're looking at those environmental surveys for those sites, so that'll be in the next month or two. And then, of course, working on that administrative draft of the subsequent Environmental Impact Report, which will allow for a larger public comment process and a review of all of the studies and findings about the changes of the project between regionalization and the revised version for the local project. So, that concludes this month's update, and really excited to keep the progress going forward. And we'll continue to report monthly. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them now.
Questions for Mark?
I have a question back to housing. We skipped over that in the recovery development updates. Under housing.
What, skip over?
We didn't ask about any questions for housing and the housing updates under recovery? I'm looking at the big agenda packet.
Okay.
Okay. I had a question back to the housing update under the recovery section. So I didn't...
Housing, I guess.
I noticed that... I noticed that we added, under the CDBG annual allocation, the 2024 annual allocation. It added a little bit more this month. It said about a substantial amendment proposes to reallocate $70,000, all of that. But then it goes on to say, "Small Business Assistance is also being considered, but HUD is not available to answer questions." So is there any, like, written parameters or processes available?
Yes, so there are many written guidelines for small business assistance programs, but they are very, very stringent in how we apply them. So we've actually tried to do small business assistance programs in the past, and they have not been very successful. That was the original intent of some of those $70,000 worth of funds. We discussed that at the last meeting, when we did that substantial amendment, that we could not get a program that would be successful with those. So we do have to spend them by a certain timeline, so that's why we were doing that substantial amendment. However, we are a community that receives this allocation every year. It's very small, but what we try to do is kind of accumulate that to do projects that are meaningful in our community. And so we are still interested in doing a small business assistance program. And we have some ideas and some things we want to talk with our HUD rep about, but they are not there because of the government shutdown. So that is what we're referring to there.
It's just like, to be determined once they're available for comment.
Exactly.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, it's just in the other order on the agenda packet.
Okay. So, 1H, Presentation by Gold Nugget Museum Regarding the Second Year of the TOT Reinvestment Program.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Today we have Julian Martinez here from the Gold Nugget Museum, who is going to talk about the TOT program for Gold Nugget. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Came to give you a quick update. Previous funds are primarily focused on rebuilding our school program, which I'm happy to say we're going to start scheduling schools to be coming to the museum starting next spring. So that's pretty exciting. We're also doing a mobile version, where we'll be able to take a truck and some volunteers out to schools, out of the area, and do presentations to schools, and hopefully help draw more tourists and tourism in that way. Our next round of funding, we're going to focus on introducing more AI technology, AR technology, and VR technology. So one of the first purchases we're going to make is Ray-Ban Meta Smart Glasses. So they look very similar to what I'm wearing, except they have a camera, a screen in the lens, microphone, and speakers built in. So what that'll allow us to do is we'll be able to talk to anybody in any language and have real-time translation, which will help. We actually get a fair amount of international travelers that stop by, and sometimes there's a language barrier there. They'll be able to wear the glasses, look at an exhibit, and ask the glasses questions, and it'll respond in real time, so they can take a deep dive as far as they want into any of the items or the history. We're working with a company named Neopangea, who specializes in AR exhibits. So we're going to start gradually, because this can be very expensive and take some time to develop. We're going to do a 3D object viewer. So guests will be able to look at rocks and minerals in a high-definition hologram that will be able to spin, and they'll be able to zoom in and interact with it. And in this way, we're hoping to draw in a younger crowd, and also provide something that you don't really see out of the area, and kind of help get more tourism up to the area. Cool. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, item 2, Consent Calendar.
I move approval. I'll second.
Motion by Bowlin, seconded by Colleton. Councilmember Bowlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Lang?
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle?
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So item 4, Public Communication. For matters that are not on the consent, on the council business agenda, speakers are allowed three minutes. Cards, Melanie?
I do have two cards. The first one is from Melissa Schuster.
Good evening, Council. I'm Melissa Schuster, and I'm here representing Hope Plaza. I want to tell you about the wonderful weekend we had last weekend. But before I do that, and I know I'm supposed to speak to Council, I know the rules, but could you please pass on to staff what a wonderful job they did in dampening the drama that happened today over the parade? They did an excellent job, and they got information out to the public, and I just want to let you know how much you're appreciated. And back onto Hope Plaza, we, we got our certificate of occupancy, our temporary certificate of occupancy on November 7th, Friday. And Saturday, we were able to open the project up to the community. We had, we were there for the cheering on the runners in the 5K. They ran right past Hope Plaza, and it was great fun. And we had a steady stream of people coming into the plaza, starting at 8 o'clock in the morning. We left probably close to 4, 4:30. And it was just a constant stream of people. There were words of appreciation, tears, hugs, and all of those things verified for me how important this is to our community. So I'm very happy to say it is now open to the public. We should have electricity and lighting by next week, and we'll have some more landscape and plants going in. And we will be, we've got the big trees, the metal trees are out for bid. And we hope to have it completed by spring with a big celebration, ribbon cutting, and all of those exciting things.
Thanks, Melissa.
The crew that's working on it is doing a great job, too. They're, they're good people. Tell them thanks.
Second card is Stephanie Rilchi.
I'd like to start off with that I'm very disappointed. I'm going to start off with this, from the CSLB Board Meeting from June 13th, 2025. What it does is it starts off with Register David Booth, addressing them about the LA fires. And, in this little spot that I have here, he references Paradise. He said, "We took a step back, and we looked at Paradise Fire. And what we determine, I received 392, at the time, consumer complaints. The goal for the LA fire rebuilds is not to receive complaints. We want to make sure consumers make an informed decision and that we don't have the unscrupulous contractors out seeking the work." 392 consumer complaints. The complaints, like, what, the one that I was involved in was four houses. That integrity builders, AKA KB builders, his license was revoked. With those violations, that his license was revoked, they have very, a lot of code violations in there. A whole lot of code violations. Do I have to go over them? You know, you have the files. We brought in files. You went through, I'm sure you got them all. During the investigation, other inspectors, you need to come to us and say, "Hey, can we see your house?" Did you come out and say, "Oh yeah, we want to see your moldy bedroom, master bedroom, and bath"? You want to go spend the night there? I dare any of you to go spend a week there. I don't think you guys have the guts. You don't care. How many people in Paradise are having to deal with the, the concrete? The lack of quality in the concrete? The, the construction of the concrete and everything? Oh yeah, my minutes. But, to come right down to it, the reason why we have 392...
Time.
Is because the inspectors.
Next comment is Doug Mounjar.
Council, I just wanted to say thank you for everything, and I wanted to thank Mark over here for his, he was trying to help to get this truck light parade off today, and the Paradise Police Department's teamwork, so we can all work together and make this happen for the Christmas season. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more cards.
Okay.
Hang on, Steve.
Please.
My name is Jeanette Westgate. Some of you know me, I was a former Planning Commission Chair back in the 90s. My granddaughter is here with me. She is the president, or was recently the president of 4H in town. The Christmas parade is at risk. I only learned about it about three hours ago. Unfortunately, there's no one here officially from 4H. There are many organizations and people who get involved, and we were looking forward to having the same event again, yes.
Can I stop here just a second? It is going on. It's all been settled.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah, all done.
And did you, I was going to volunteer to pay myself for any, anything that you needed done, rather than...
So town staff went to basin construction, and they're, they do, you know, street closures and things like that. They, they've offered to do a traffic plan and to donate the barricades and so forth for it. So that's, that's all done, but Doug is, is running the parade, so you might like to talk to him, but, but we're all set, and it's a go.
It's going to happen.
I'm actually going to leave, because I worked in Sacramento this morning, starting at 6:00. So if you don't mind, I'll just say thank you all for your service and for your great care, and thank you, I'm not supposed to address him, but tell that guy there he's... Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more cards.
Okay.
Thank you, Doug.
So, item 6, Council Consideration. So, item 6A, Consider Modifying the Town of Paradise Public Works Department Position Control. And this is Mark.
Thank you, Mayor Crowder, Council, good evening again. So this item before you tonight is required, as we have a couple of recommended changes that are separate, but have happened at the same time, so that's why it's consolidated into one single item. So the first of the two items involves the reclassification of a position that we have for a senior maintenance worker in the Public Works Department Maintenance Division. And instead, we had some attrition through retirement. And instead of replacing the senior maintenance worker, staff is recommending that we change the position control to modify that position for a Maintenance Worker 1/2 position that'll better complement the overall program for our maintenance operations, for drainage, roadways, signs, and safety. So that one is pretty straightforward, and it comes with some cost savings for this budget year for '25-'26, and as well as ongoing fiscal years. Separately from that, we have a reclassification recommendation for a Public Works Administrative Assistant to a Program Analyst with a revised job description. This individual, through their performance reviews and evolution of their job duties in the Public Works Department, has taken on new roles and responsibilities that exceeded the Administrative Assistant classification. So with that, staff confidently recommends a reclassification after this year's evaluation. And so with that, there is a revised job description in your agenda packet, as well as compensation changes. There is minor impacts for the '25-'26 budget year of about $7,905, and then annual budget impact of ongoing costs of $14,643. With these two proposed changes, the Public Works Department's position allocation plan remains solid. We've got a great team doing a lot of great work, and both of these action items come together to help further that mission. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions the council might have.
Questions for Mark? All right.
Any cards?
I have no cards on this item.
I move approval. I'll second.
Motion by Bowlin, seconded by Colleton. Councilmember Bowlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton? Councilmember Colleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Lang.
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle.
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And I'd like to also say thank you to, tell the people thanks. Two things have come up lately, some ditch cleaning that needed to happen after a storm, and then there was a tie-in to a driveway with asphalt and stuff. All you gotta do is just bring it up, and they put it on their list and they take care of it.
Yeah.
That means a lot, so thank you, and tell them thank you for that.
I will, thank you.
Okay, six B, review and approve the release of a request for proposal relating to the facility's master plan and core yard. Mark?
Thank you again, Mayor Crowder. Good evening again, council and community. This item is following up from last month when we brought forward an update of our facilities ad hoc committee. And, and through that committee, or through the last town council meeting, we acknowledged a progress report of the committee, which comprised of Councilmember Bowlin and Councilmember Colleton. That report including, included, I'm sorry, that action last month included establishing a long-range facilities fund, as well as dedicating funds for short-term security improvements at Town Hall. And then as well as kind of directed staff to, again, meet with the facilities committee and consider the need for hiring a consultant team to prepare a facility's master plan. Here on this slide, I'm showing our inventory of properties with structures, and then properties as vacant land. Through the 2018 campfire, we lost five structures. We have finally, this last calendar year, reached a settlement agreement, and that's part of the funds being established in a separate, a separate account, to really help us be in a good position to understand what decisions need to be made moving forward, properties that need to be surplus, properties that can be reused, and, and what is the long-range vision of the town when it comes to facilities. So with that, afterward, the facilities committee did meet again. We decided to move forward with recommending a issuance of a request for proposals, free to review this evening. The scope of work is included in the agenda packet, but broadly, I'll summarize it. It would engage a qualified architectural engineering firm to complete a townwide facilities master plan within six months. Time is definitely of the essence, so we are looking to move this as quickly as possible. But even within that, we're trying to bring on a team early that, within the first four weeks, they can help us complete an analysis on what to do with our corporation yard rebuild status, especially as it relates to the site options. Between rebuilding at the old site at, on American Way, we could relocate to a property that's for sale, or try and engage with a vacant property owner that's not for sale at this point. Or we could look at potentially co-locating with the future Fire Station eighty-two, if that's the priority of the council and the community. So in addition, on the scope of work side, after the council selects a site, the consultant would prepare design plans and bid documents for the new corporation yard while the broader master plan wraps up. This all, overall effort would partner with CalFire to explore proven fire station design concepts that could be efficiently adapted for a future Fire Station eighty-two, again, if that's the priority of the indirection of the council. And then also, we would include a full cost estimating and implementation recommendation to guide fiscally responsible decisions for all town response, all town facilities, excuse me. So that includes maintenance requirements, ADA compliance, you know, deferred issues that need to be replaced, or equipment that fails over time. So a comprehensive document that will guide the decision-making of the community for town facilities. So a copy of that RFP is included in the agenda packet for your review. Funding for this facility's master plan would be sourced from that long-range facilities fund, that again is comprised of funds that were paid to the town out of insurance settlement proceeds for the campfire losses. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions the council might have. And then I do have a second slide of a map of all of our facilities, orange being vacant land and black being-
Thanks, Mark. I just was curious, do we have, okay, we have a certain amount of money from insurance to rebuild things we lost, which obviously won't be enough. So is there an idea of like, of a percentage or dollar? I mean, how much are we going to, out of those funds, are we gonna spend on a plan?
Yeah, so the total fund amount, I believe, right now is about nine point four million. A plan like this, and we'll prepare an independent cost estimate, but a plan like this, I would estimate to be less than two hundred thousand dollars. But, but that would be an estimate at this point. Obviously, we haven't done-
In that ballpark.
Yes, but in that ballpark, correct. You know, previously, prior to the 2018 campfire, we just did a facilities inventory, and that was about sixty-four thousand in 2017. So factoring in, kind of, we're looking for a lot, quite a bit more work and work product. That is, you know, initial estimate what I would have, but we would be able to see the costs and make a determination at the time of recommendation for award if this were to proceed. Uh huh.
Any cards?
I have no cards on this item.
Well, since I'm on the committee and we are recommending this, I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by Colleton, seconded by Bowlin, Councilmember Bowlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Lang.
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle.
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder.
Aye.
Motion passes.
So six C, consider concurring with staff's recommendation of Corallo engineers to perform professional civil engineering and design services to complete design of a new wastewater treatment facility. Mark?
All right, good evening again, council. Last one, I promise, for me. So the item before you, as I mentioned in the sewer update, is, relates solely to awarding a contract to bring on a civil engineering team to support the town in designing a wastewater treatment facility. We already have a contract to perform the design of the collection system. As I mentioned, the transition of the progressive design-build contract, we're retaining that engineer. And we issued a separate, independent request for qualifications for the design of this wastewater treatment facility at a site to be determined. Our scope of work was approved by the town council. Our team put together a great RFQ to advertise. We've engaged with numerous consultants, and we received four, four statements of qualifications from great firms. We had an evaluation committee as a subset of our ad hoc committee. The committee evaluating the four proposals we received on this work were Mayor Steve Crowder, Heidi Lang, council member, Mark Sulik of Paradise Irrigation District, myself, and Colin Nelson, our, our capital projects manager for the sewer project. We reviewed and evaluated these four proposals, and we had a unanimous recommendation, almost top to bottom, but unanimous for the number one recommendation being Corallo engineers. And we extend our sincere thanks to proposers number two through three. And staff is confident in recommending Corallo engineers. They are the firm that is also preparing the design for the collection system. They've done significant work for the town, continue to demonstrate high experience and qualifications for this type of work, and their statement of qualifications really demonstrated that in their, in their SOQ response to our needs. So with that, how this works moving forward is staff and the committee is recommending award of this contract, so that we can kick off contract negotiations for final adjustments to the scope of work and compensation. At this point, we had prepared an independent cost estimate for the, the design of the facility at four point five million. We are very, very confident that even at the four point five million, that is one hundred percent within our budget. But the cost estimate that we're looking to negotiate with this team is going to be significantly lower, and I'll continue to keep the, the council and committee apprised of this if it were to be awarded. So tonight, we are asking for you to concur with staff's recommendation of Corallo engineers to perform the work, direct staff to enter negotiations that would allow that, if, if approved by the town attorney, the town manager could execute a funding compliance agreement and adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five seventy-five, really affirming the selection of Corallo engineers and awarding of this contract. Again, the fiscal impact for this project is completely within our one hundred percent funded grant through CDBGDR, planning grant from our overall budget of thirty million to deliver the pre-design and pre-construction services for the project. And so with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions the council might have on this item.
Questions for Mark? So Mark, I gotta tell you, this has been a real long road, and you and, and your team has done an excellent job with this. And Heidi, you know, you got a lot of time with this, and PID was, was part of it, so it was really a, a big team effort, and I wanna thank you for that. And so with that, I make a motion, we pass it.
I'll second it, and hope that this is the last time I have to second anything about the sewer. No, no promises on that. Yeah, definitely not.
Motion by Crowder, seconded by LaSalle, Councilmember Bowlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Lang.
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle.
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Cards? Okay. Six D. After presentation, review and file the financial information provided by staff concerning the year twenty-five, twenty-six operating capital budgets. Amy?
Good evening, council. In your packet before you, we have our budget adjustments so far for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. You'll see that it's broken down by a couple different funds, so we have our general fund. And this is a report straight out of our system, so I'll kind of explain it a little bit in case it's a little bit clunky. You'll see that midway, you have the town manager adjustment. So we have multiple interims, and one of those costs was approximately twenty thousand dollars. The separation of the prior town manager, that was a hundred and seventeen thousand approximately. Those are both out of the general fund. We have a town manager search, which is approximately five thousand dollars. And then we also have our CDD audit, which is fifty thousand. So a hundred and ninety-one thousand is hitting the general fund, which will be a contribution from our pro funds to cover the balance. And this is, as we go through the year, there's different times where we need budget adjustments versus, for priorities changes or unexpected items. And so, so far in the year, these are the items that have come up. If you look at the next page, you'll see that there is a CDD contribution for consultants. And if you could progress. One more, please. So for half a million dollars, that's gonna go in Fund twenty-thirty, which is our CDD fund. And that will, it's anticipated to cover the next six months for consultants' VPR, that is backfilling staff at the time. So those are our budget adjustments so far for the year. So that's six hundred and ninety-one thousand, and that's in Fund ten-ten, which is our general fund, and twenty-thirty, which is our building and wastewater services. Any questions?
So I wanna make sure I'm clear. The, the first one you showed us was our separation with the prior manager.
That is correct, as well as the audit. So that's general fund allocation.
And the second one is the whole building department situation that's been going on.
Sure, so that's the backfill and additional staff.
Almost seven hundred thousand dollars for those two items.
That is correct. And that's a projection. So the general fund items, the separation cost for the town manager, and those are not projections, whereas the fifty thousand is a projection, because I don't have the exact total, but that's what we anticipate. Five thousand is what we anticipate for the town manager's search. And then the half a million is what we anticipate with the projection of a hundred thousand dollars a month. But that could ebb and flow based off of the months outgoing, what that looks like. And we've only received two invoices so far, so it's an estimate.
On the building department, so we don't know if that even covers, if we go with the recommendations, it doesn't know, we don't know if that covers that going forward.
Correct.
So it could be more.
And so for the month of September, it was a hundred and seventeen thousand. That's an actual cost.
That's, this is sad news, sad news.
And you'll see, if you progress to the next slide, I put in the projections or actuals for this year, this is through September, and you'll see that our expenses in the general fund are hitting thirty percent. So that's, we would look to see around twenty-five percent for your first quarter. However, we have to front-load things such as PERS rates and different things like that. And so that would be an upfront cost of two point seven million for retirement that we prepay. So that's why it increases that percentage a little bit skewed. And you'll see that you'll have the hundred and ninety-one thousand in the second column, that's the additions in the general fund. Next slide, please. So the building department, as we've talked about before, our rates have not include, been increased since 2017. So we're projected to deficit spend in that fund. We had a cushion, or we have a cushion in that fund to protect us for deficit spending, and so we had anticipated approximately a million dollars deficit spending in twenty-five, twenty-six in Fund twenty-thirty. With this additional, we will be deficit spending by one point five, so that is fifty percent more. So that's gonna bring down our rolling fund balance. Any questions on this?
Question on the reimbursement from the building department on things that they do and all the others. We had a presentation a couple of council meetings ago, and I guess I've forgotten. When are we gonna see the recommendations for, if any, changes, because I know we haven't looked at those in a long time. Is that on the future?
It's on the radar. We're gonna be bringing it. I needed to consult with the department heads-
Okay.
-for the building department to see where we wanted to come in with those rates.
Okay, thank you.
So these were some of the items. Can you go to the next slide, please? So it was also requested that we bring up position control a couple of months ago. So you can see that our position control has all of our employees with the number of FTEs that are associated with that, and it also shows our vacancies. And so right now, we have, I believe, five vacancies in here, but we're actively seeking people to be filled. So you'll see town manager is actually filled right now because we have an interim. When we were looking at the budget modifications for that, the existing budget that we had anticipated for the town manager is already built, as if the person is there all year. However, our town manager is not a full FTE at this point, so we should have some cost savings in there. So he's not a full forty hours a week.
How do we see vacancies on this list? I don't understand.
So if you, so you'll see right there, so the, sorry, the accounting assistant two, you'll see there's a vacancy in the third column where you have names. It'll show a vacancy if there's nobody in the position.
Oh, okay, we didn't go far enough, okay.
Yep. So it's kind of a clunky report, but I was asked to present position control, so it's straight out of the system. Any questions on that? Okay. One of the other items that we're also bringing is an adjustment to our salary schedule. And the reason for this was with the town manager, when we presented it at budget adoption, the new rates were not put in place, not negotiated. So the negotiated rates are now in this adjustment. The other one is for the accounting assistant two, or one. When we presented budget, we had that listed as an accounting assistant two. But should we have the opportunity to hire an accounting assistant one, we need to have that documented in our records. So that is why that number is also being brought forth. So we are currently have an opening, we're doing interviews, so depending on the experience base, we'll dictate which way we go with that position. Any questions on the salary? No? Okay. That's all I have for this item. So upon the pleasure of council, how would you like to proceed?
Questions for Amy?
No questions, just very disappointing.
Cards?
I have no cards on this item.
Not disappointed with you, I don't want you to think I'm disappointed. This is, you clarified, but I'm disappointed with the amount of money we're spending on something that did not have to happen.
Yeah, six hundred and ninety-one thousand.
Six hundred and ninety-one thousand. Of the people's money.
So we have the two resolutions that are associated with this item, and filing the financial reports.
So we need a motion?
Yes.
What is the motion for? Resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy-seven? I'll move approval of motion, Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash seven-seven.
There is also twenty twenty-five-
And also twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six, twenty twenty-five dash seventy-six, and twenty twenty-five dash seventy-seven. And thank you for a wonderful job of making numbers make sense to somebody that's confused by numbers.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion by Colleton, seconded by LaSalle, Councilmember Bowlin.
Aye, disappointed, but aye.
Councilmember Colleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Lang.
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle.
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder.
Aye.
Motion passes.
So, six E, waive the first reading of the entire town ordinance number 651 and read by title only and introduce Town of Paradise Ordinance Number 651 and ordinance the town council mending portions of chapter 2.45. And Amy.
Well, I'm glad to be up here again. Thank you. So, this has to do with our purchasing policy and the corresponding ordinance that goes along with it. Last month was approved for the purchasing policy. And so, that we don't have a policy and an ordinance contradicting themselves, we have the updating of the ordinance that goes along with it. So, the other, the old one was a few pages long, and as you saw the policy, it's over 80 pages long. So, the policy itself is more robust and gives more direction.
So, in our report, I did not see an amount.
An amount?
That it was changed from and to. I didn't see that in, aren't we changing the amount of money that can be authorized? What are we doing here?
For, sorry, so, no, it goes back to the policy. So, the $100,000 is where the town manager limit is, $30,000 is for the director level. And so, the ordinance is referencing that we follow the purchasing policy as opposed to have it being different items spelled out in the old ordinance.
Okay, I didn't have that ordinance to show that. So, it's $100,000 for the manager. Okay. And it's always been $30,000 for director?
No, I believe we spelled it out.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for Amy?
I have no cards on this item.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Bolin, seconded by Colleton, Councilmember Bolin.
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Lang.
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle.
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you for explaining everything, Amy.
Well, we just count beans, so we do our best.
Fewer beans.
Six F, concur with staff recommendations to award a contract for the long-term community recovery plan. Colette.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council, good evening. So, this item is, this started with a, an application that was submitted at the direction of council for CDBGDR MIT PPS funds. That stands for Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Mitigation Planning and Public Services. So, there was funding, yes. The acronyms get longer and longer. So, this was funding specifically because of our disaster, and it's for planning and public services. This comes from HUD through, it starts with Congress, through HUD to HCD at the state level. And then, we were able to apply for funds for various different activities. So, this was one of those. And you may recall, this application was submitted to update our long-term community recovery plan, which we initially underwent and council adopted in 2019. We updated that in 2022, and with this opportunity, we are looking to update it again. And we are really excited about this opportunity to update this in a very robust manner because of this funding source that is 100% grant-funded, there is no local match required because it is CDBGDR-funded. So, we submitted that application, we were awarded those funds at council's direction. At the last meeting, we went out for a request for proposals. We received four qualified proposals from, from excellent firms. And through a scoring procedure with our review committee, which consisted of myself, our town clerk, and our recovery and economic development project manager, we reviewed those applications, or excuse me, those proposals. We scored them, we had two top-scoring proposals. We decided to interview them both, and they both did a great job. But we had a unanimous decision in which we selected UDA, Urban Design Associates, to, to move forward with this recommendation. So, that is staff's recommendation to you tonight to consider awarding that contract or asking the town manager to enter into that contract. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Colette?
No, I'm just, I'm happy to see that they're interested in doing this. That's, I mean, that's, they are such a great outfit to work with, and I'm excited to see this happen, so.
I have a question. You mentioned Economic Development Director or something?
So, our review committee was myself, Brian Selecky, who's the project manager in the department, and the town clerk.
Yeah, because you mentioned somebody, is that Brian?
Yes, it's Brian.
Oh, okay. And so, this is Urban Design? Is Barry on the call?
Yes, I believe Barry is joining us virtually.
I have a question for Barry.
Okay, great.
I'm, I'm like, I'm with Greg, I'm excited to do this because when we did this initially after the fire in 2019, everybody was raw, everybody, nobody was back in town yet, and we had a lot of ideas about what was important. And we've learned when we redid this in 2022, or whenever it was, that some of those things that were of great importance in 2019 were no longer that important, like a new town hall downtown. But Barry, my question to you is, in the last update we did, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can, wait.
Okay. In the last update we did, in some of the public outreach, and when I looked at the scope of the RFP, we're going to do these surveys and online, and we had a few surveys when we were looking at different things, and like, there were like 300 people was all that responded. My concern is, we have about 11,000 or 12,000 people in town now. Our council meetings have been, the room's been full. We have a, a new population, which is wonderful. We have people that want to be involved and are paying attention to the decisions we make. So, I want to make sure that in your endeavor, whether you come up with some other creative ways, I want to make sure we get more people involved in this upgrade of this new plan, more than 300 or 400 people, you know. So, I would like you to do that for me, okay?
100%, Woody, and I think we may have even, sorry, Councilmember Colleton, we may have even said that and used your name in our response, having heard that from you before. And there are some things, and Mayor Crowder too, and others. I mean, and we've been spending time with Councilmember LaSalle and Lang on, working on the downtown, which we're going to wrap this year. But there are some things that we heard that need to be addressed, that's one of them. Other ones also include, and which we would call just a deeper grassroots dive on community engagement. So, this proposal that we submitted doesn't just include ourselves, it also includes a community engagement specialist, it includes a pyroanalyst, John Messina's company, to work on looking at where we are related to our approach to adaptation and just benchmarking that. And it also includes a financial services firm to look at new strategies for economic recovery and development, including downtown recovery, small business support, housing recovery, and job creation. And it also includes a pitch deck, which is a lookbook for downtown, the commercial quarters and job development, because that's an unfunded need that we can roll into this, that we've discussed in the past. And the fifth thing was a thorough documentation of recovery to date, positioning Paradise as the leader in wildfire resilience and disaster recovery. That's something that's very close to my heart, but it's something that we have an opportunity to do here. So, the priorities have changed, the, well, I wouldn't even say changed, it's just, you've accomplished a lot, and we need to absolutely document and acknowledge that. But going forward, the course forward's, I think, a little different than we saw right after the fire, or even in the first update. And that's why we're going to do a deeper grassroots dive on community engagement, and the consultant team and I, our first stop, is going to be talking to the five of you. And we look forward to it, I think. I mean, we're, we love working in Paradise, and I can't explain why, but our energy level is probably as high as ever, so that's all I can tell you.
You know, I want to, just for the public's information, we've worked with you a couple of times in the past, you and your, your organization are completely 100% spot-on, you do fantastic work, you're trustworthy and really great people. You know, our population has definitely changed. A lot of us old-timers that were here pre-fire have come back after moving away, some of us stayed. But a large percentage, I've forgotten what the percentage is, the Chamber of Commerce, I think, has it. A lot of the new people that are moving here are young families because our school system is so good, and it's a wonderful place to raise a family. So, there's that whole dynamic. We have a large part of our population now that weren't here during the fire, and they've come here after the fire to, to make a life for themselves. I really appreciate what you guys do, I look forward to working with you in this endeavor, and, you know, you do great work, and I just want the public to know that. You can trust this man and his crew, so get involved, get involved, because we want to, we want to know what you want. That's, we're just here as your representatives, and we need your input as we develop this plan to rebuild our town going forward. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Woody, and we're working in support of the town, that's our role, and we understand our role too, and really appreciate what you're doing.
My question is, do you ever age? You look the same as you did when you started with this. I feel like I've gotten so old. I don't think so. You look great.
I can relate to that, Barry. So, I, I got to say, because I think Greg and I are the only ones here now that are, other than staff, the only council people that are here when you first came here, right after the fire, and, and, you know, I remember the, many times at CMA Church with the A-frames and the little red dots and, and all that, and you, you did a great job there, and we just, you know, we're looking forward to getting this, this part of it done, so thank you, Barry.
Yeah, you wouldn't give me any red dots, so I was kind of still resentful about that.
But we have a robust team, so I think this is going to be a great process over the next 12 months.
Great, thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions?
I do have one card.
Any, any question, okay. Go ahead, card.
Bill Sharrett.
And I use Bill Sharrett on the, on the school board. I would like to be, I'd like the school to be part of this plan as well, it's never been asked of the schools in, in prior recovery plans. And I think, as you mentioned, we have an excellent school system, we have a plan of what we want to do, which we're going to revise again. I would like to be, I would like our district, not me, but if, you know, if you want me, that's fine, but the school board, the superintendent, to be part of this plan, because we've never been asked before, and I think it's an integral part of the plan. Thank you.
Yeah, makes sense.
If you'd like me to address that, I, I can. That certainly is part of the, of the effort, is to make sure all of our local cooperative agencies, including the school district, including our water purveyor, including, you know, all of our local cooperators, be part of this. We really want this to be as inclusive as possible.
Perfect, thank you, Colette. Motion?
I move approval.
I'll second it, I like Barry.
Motion by Bolin, seconded by Colleton, Councilmember Bolin.
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Lang.
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle.
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item six G, consider waiving the entire first reading of Town Ordinance Number 652 and read by title only and introduce Town Ordinance Number 652. Tony?
Well, good evening, Council, Mayor Crowder. Today, we're doing the California Building Standards Code adoption. So, next slide? Where we can jump in the slide? Got it, cool. So, every three years, the California Building Standards Commission adopts a new series of regulations and codes. This improves public safety, fire resilience, structural integrity. Jurisdictions adopting timely ordinances are recognized by ISO, the Insurance Services Office for Risk Reduction. And it supports lower insurance risk ratings and community recovery. So, along with the California Building Standards Commission, there's also some assembly bills that also guide what, you know, is, is required. And so, AB 1236 and 970 expedited timelines for standardized mills for EV chargers. Along with that, there is AB 130 that requires for online intake and digital review, e-payments and real-time tracking. And that's where our GovWell program, as we, we sorted out and going through any of these kind of, oh, software changes, there's, there is some growing pains until we get it all ironed out.
EV charging, that's standalone charger, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct, like we have at, next to Joey Lins.
Right, right.
And Burkets, they have.
Oh, they do?
Yep.
Oh.
So, that's AB 30, in addition to... There you go. One, AB 130 also restricts local amendments to the building code. So, starting off, the model code now includes the International Wildland and Urban Interface Code. And what that does, that takes out that wooey stuff out of the residential code and out of the building code, and combines it into one, one book, essentially. So, now, we have another book.
So, is that now statewide with every jurisdiction?
Correct. It's now the California Wildland and Urban Interface Code.
So, everything's wildland, urban interface in all of California?
Well, you have certain hazard severity ratings that...
Oh, you still have those?
You still have, yeah, you still have those. Yeah, we're still rated. One big one, though, is the currently mastered plans. So, our master plans, if you'd have, like for rebuild Paradise homes, those mastered plans are good until June 1st, 2031. So, you won't have to get those re-adopted, and that really mirrors the, kind of the limited changes there are in the residential code. And again, I said no stricter local amendments to residential units. So, notable code updates, really, through here, it's, this is kind of like a 30,000-foot view, it's really focused in every code about lithium ion battery storage and solar requirements, right? That's becoming good. Of course, there's ventilation, water efficiency from plumbing as well. We'll do a more in-depth dive to this in a series that we're having, we already built kind of a cadre for our building stakeholders meetings, that we will be going through individual changes, all the significant changes in all the codes. But obviously, that, you know, I'd be happy to present here for three hours, but you know, this is just, you know, a view of, of what we have. So, the new Wildland and Urban Interface Code, right? Now, here's part seven. So, it updated ignition-resistant materials, enhanced soffit and even vent ember resistance, and revised the wooey standards for accessory structures. So, a non-wooey structure now is required to be 50 foot away from the buildings, right? We, last year was 30, now they bumped it out to 50 feet. Of course, if it's a wooey structure built to Wildland and Urban Interface standards, that would be a 10-foot separation. So, you can, you can get closer if it's wooey-rated, but if it's made out of matchsticks, it has to be, you know, bumped out 50 feet.
So, if I have an existing shed that's non-wooey built...
Turn your mic off.
That is 30 feet away.
Well, you're, you were, you were permitted under...
Okay, so that's not, it's not going to be retroactive.
Right, you were, correct, correct.
Good, thank you.
It's not, it's not retroactive. But interesting enough, our jurisdiction and other local jurisdictions that were in a very high fire hazard severity zone, the first court on open eve, we did an interpretation to do, we had a fire-rated plywood, right? And that wasn't in the code, but now it is. So, now, we have all these open eaves with fire-rated ply, and this was an argument I had with IBHS when they were up here, and they recognized, you know, they didn't have to be an enclosed soffit, you know, that we actually have fire-rated ply. So, that was good. So, moving on, so, implementation and outreach? Well, you know, we certainly, we're going to update our guide, our guidance, our checklist and our training. We'll partner with regional agencies, the example like Valley Contractors Exchange or the Shasta Cascade, a chapter of International Code Council. We are bringing in the Energy Commission, and at the time that I wrote the report, the Energy Commission was going to present at our December stakeholders meeting. Well, between then and now, they canceled and they pushed to January. So, we'll be starting off in our December meeting, going through all the significant changes. But it's very important to get them up here, because that's really where the changes happen, you know, energy electrification of, you know, California. So, financial impact, well, there's no general fund impact to adopting the codes, it's just typical admin training costs for building division operations. But you will, you know, we're not aware of any big increases in construction costs, but as we all know, when the building codes change, that rarely results in a cost reduction to construction.
Never, you mean, never. We, we want affordable housing, but we never find a way to...
Correct.
Right. Just want to make sure we understood that.
So, there you go. And I'm available for any... Yeah. So there you go. And I'm available for any questions.
Good job.
The only question I would have on this, going through, I didn't go through all of it, so. But there's still that thing in there that if, if you're over 18-inch foot level, it's 30 pound, 30-pound snow load. If you're below 18, which is dicey in paradise. I mean, we can say Billy Road, but people could argue that fact. Why can't we make Paradise 30-pound snow load? And just say, if you're building Paradise, it's 30 pounds. I mean, we're talking pennies. All it is, is increasing the plate size on the truss. And that way, it's a flat, this is what it is in Paradise. There's no question, no issue. Is that, would that be a problem to do?
Correct. We could make that modification if that was council's direction.
I, I just something I would throw out there. The rest of you guys can...
Yeah, we built that off of Chapter 1608 of the California Building. Gives you those...
So if, if you're above 1,800 feet, 1,800, if you're 1,790, you could sit there and say, I'm 1,790. I need 20 pounds. We saw how many, if you've been here long enough, you see how many buildings went down in the 90s, that were caved in and wet snow and all that. And, and to me, it's just, we're, we're throwing, it, it, it does make sense. It just doesn't make sense for Paradise. Go 30 pounds, it's all the same. You build in Paradise, that's what it is. I'm just throwing it out there. There's...
Is there something you want to put on as a future agenda item?
No.
This is actually something, so because this is an ordinance that, that is being amended, you can actually amend it now. And when it comes back for the second reading, the amendments that you request today will be incorporated in the second reading. And then it can be passed on a second reading. That's the purpose for the dual...
Right.
For the dual readings of an ordinance is, you can, you can massage the first reading. The second reading, you can't make any modifications. If you do, then it has to come back for a third.
Right, right. So I, I'm just throwing it out there. You guys...
So I, I got, I got, just give me a ballpark, say on a 1,800-square-foot house, what, how much would that increase the cost?
If it was $100, I'd be surprised. Hundred and, you know. It's, it's nothing. It's changing the size of a plate from a, a four-by-six to a five-by-eight, you know.
What, a metal plate?
It's a metal plate that...
And it bonds them together?
Yes. Okay. It's, it's, sometimes it moves the webs a little bit tighter, but it's just...
When they build the truss?
Right, right.
Yeah, they just put a different sized plate.
Right, right. It's, it's miniscule, and it just makes it everything...
Plate gang nail, right.
And, and when you do a master plan, you're almost gonna go 30 pounds anyway.
Uh, I'd say the majority.
Because you don't know if you're gonna be up or below.
Thirty pounds, they can be anywhere. They can put plant that high.
Get that off the plate. Just, we're just 30 pounds. I...
It would certainly make it easier.
Those of us that have been here long enough, we've seen this, no problems. We haven't had it for a while, but when we do, it's ugly. So, and I just...
We haven't had Aurora Coriolis for a while either.
Last night?
Last, last night, right.
Changing heat.
Okay.
So do you, you wanna...
I would like to see us add that. But, you know, if, if you're okay with it. I mean, I'm not, not a hill for me to die on, but I think it'd be...
The town reach code is going above and beyond.
Okay, hang on. Let's, we have a card?
Christine Poggi.
I wanted to ask Mr...
No, you gotta come up.
Come up here.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for all you did with the parade. Thank you for all you do. And I wanted to ask Mr. Tony about the lithium ion batteries and how that might increase costs. You mentioned that, that is a new code. The lithium ion batteries. Can you explain it to me?
So, lithium ion battery safety is really what the codes are designed around on.
Right.
So you're, we're seeing now smaller panel sizes and incorporating a battery in the requirements the Energy Commission requires you to have solar in your homes. So...
The danger of the battery and there's increased cost in putting out the fires or anything like that. You're just changing the ratio of panels to the battery?
Essentially, that's how the, that's how the Energy Commission works. When they rate solar, you can have less panels if you have batteries. And what they, what the guidelines are, is for lithium battery safety. As we know, once a, once a battery starts on fire, it's very hard to put out.
Yeah, that, that's my question, is like, if they're all about this battery storage now, does that gonna change the fire sprinkler situation, or the placement where you can put these batteries? Because once they start, they can't put them out.
It, it, it won't affect the sprinkler counts. What it does, it requires you to have like a heat detector in a garage. You can also put these batteries exterior.
So you could know, you know, before the fire starts, is that it?
Yeah, it gives you notice. Right.
Unless you're at home, and obviously...
Like a smoke detector, right? But in a garage, it will be a heat detector.
You won't fire one of my garage.
Okay. Greg, do you want to...
Yeah, I'd, I'd move, we'd adopt this. And we don't have a choice. We have to adopt it. But I'd like to make the change that in all of Paradise, we go, everything in Paradise goes to a 30-pound snow load on the roof.
Yeah. Concurrent, we just need concurrents, right?
I need...
No, you need, you need a motion.
That was a motion.
Motion, and I...
Motion by Bullen, seconded by Colleton. Councilmember Bullen?
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lang?
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle?
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Tony. Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Okay, seven. Council-initiated agenda items, there are none. 7A1, discuss sending a letter of support to the victims of the campfire to the United States Bankruptcy Court and PG&E. So I, I put that on the Board of Supervisors sent one, and I think it's in our packet. We're, you know, the, the trust is, well, the trust doesn't have the money to pay the last 30%. So the letter that the county sent is asking the bankruptcy court to step in, or PG&E to step up and pay the difference. And, you know, I don't know where this will go, but it's, you know, it's worth a, worth a shot. And we'll, I, I think, you know, being the county supporting it, we need to support it. And, you know, I, I know that every single campfire victim would like to have the other 30%. They need it to, to move on, being, you know, they, they lost so much with attorney fees and everything else. And it, it didn't come in all at once. So they had to use, you know, for living expense. And so it really would be helpful. So I'm asking for us to kind of duplicate the letter that the county wrote.
Yep. I totally agree. And I'm glad that we're bringing it up. This needs, oh, it would have been nice to happen earlier, but this is great. And let's do it.
Yeah, let's do it.
Yeah, I agree too. You know, we were the first fire, big fire. Well, there's other fires, but we were the first one. I mean, what happened here was, and that whole thing was, we all got scammed by the lawyers. We got scammed by the bankruptcy, by the whole, the whole thing. And I just think that we're in a unique position to where we should be pushing back on a lot of this stuff. I mean, we're being regulated by like 1383, you know, where our population of 2014 is being used to mandate how much compost we have to buy back under the new organics ordinance. You know, there's so many things that we just sometimes, we need to push back on this date. And, and it may not do any good, but we certainly should, you know, I would like the other 30%, you know, even though it's only $1.83.
And we need to support our residents. We've had a number of them ask us to support this. So I, well, we totally concur with it.
I do have a card on this item. Ken Clausen?
Just very briefly, thank you very much. Thank you very much for considering this and supporting it. Thank you for the people that are trying to rebuild and get their lives back together, their kids, their families. And we need to move on together, making Paradise a vibrant community again. That's my goal in this whole thing. And with your letter, I'm pushing forward. And anytime you'd like to talk about it, one-on-one, I'm more than happy to. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken, for all you've done.
Okay, have a motion?
Is this a motion?
Do we need, we don't need a motion? Okay.
Do we need a motion on this? Or do we just concur? Do we sign the letter?
I would actually prefer a motion and a second to vote on approving the letter that was, that's on page 161 of the agenda.
I so move.
Second.
Just change the names.
Sorry, who's seconded?
I do.
Okay. Motion by LaSalle, seconded by Colleton. Councilmember Bullen?
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lang?
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle?
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. 7B, council reports on committee representation. Greg, you want to start?
Um, yeah, I, I did everything. I went to the PID, went to the school district. PID might have been last month.
It was last month.
Who's counting?
That's why no one else was there, Greg.
And Lafco. Lafco, went to Lafco. And that's going very well. And it has very good leadership moving forward. I will miss Steve, but I'm very happy with how things are going with Lafco. But I do want to say this. Just this last week, it's, it's, I watch, Paradise is a special place. And a lot of people are doing what they can to help bring Paradise back. I watched the football game, a lot of volunteers at the high school football game. A lot of people out there, and it was a good crowd. And they did, the team did great. And it was, it's just fun. It's a fun night. And then I, I watched the, the flags go up on Tuesday, had a bunch of people go, man, that is so cool. That is the neatest thing. But all these young and older people are putting them out and picking them up. And the volunteer work for that is just incredible to watch. And I don't know if you guys have seen, there's a gentleman walking around town. He wears shorts, he's got a long gray beard. He just walks around town. I just see him everywhere in town. And now I see him with something to pick up trash, and, and he has a trash bag. And I pulled over and I said, I'm Greg, and I want to thank you. And he says, I'm Mike, and I love this place, and I want to do what I can. And he says, I figured I was walking around town, why don't I pick up the trash since I'm walking around town? You know, something as simple as that, that's very, very cool. And so anyway, very appreciative of people, what they do.
So I was able to attend the community center ribbon cutting just shortly after our last council, council meeting, I believe, which was really exciting to have another facility like that open in town to, to serve our community. And I was able to attend Hanky's 100th anniversary, which was really cool, too. We are very fortunate to have some of these longtime families and businesses here in our community. The COC Committee and the PUSD Board Meeting. And I was able to participate in one of the Neighbor to Neighbor paintings still. Those are still going on, on Friday nights at 6 o'clock at the Art Center, free under the Neighbor to Neighbor Grant. So it's a really good opportunity if you, you're into that thing. We did our first Rotary Highway cleanup project for the mile or so down below town on the uphill side. That was pretty exciting. And the PUSD Liaison Committee. And then I was able to help put on the haunted house at the Elks Lodge for the community, which was a great time, too. And it was really fun to see all the kids come out. We had, I think, about 300 people attend that. So that was cool. And then I was also able to help put on the Christmas preview this last weekend here in town. And was really excited to see all of the support that came out for our businesses and, you know, kind of get off to a positive start to the holiday season. Thank you to everybody who came out for that. And then I was able to help with the flags. And as Greg said, it's another really cool tradition here in Paradise, that everybody has, has a great time, even if you're just driving by. And that's it.
I attended, I'm sorry, I attended the community center meeting late, where they had the ribbon cutting. I was excited to see they had equipment in the kitchen, because the last time I was there, it was just a big vacant room, and they were concerned about funding for it. And all, obviously, that came through. And it's just an outstanding facility for the, for the community. We've had several town manager, manager recruitment meetings where we're reviewing resumes, things of that nature. A lot of them coming in, so we're going through them. Attended two meetings down in Chico for the BCG and the Air Quality Management. Also attended the PG&E, had an undergrounding tour out on Pence, where they were showing us a 12-foot trench that they were having to dig down there. I'm telling you, I would never want to work in the bottom of a 12-foot trench. I saw the guys down there, and they just, they weren't sweating one bit about it. And I'm looking down there and says, there's no way you could pay me enough to be down there. So I really appreciate what PG&E does. I know they had the walls shored up, but you're working 12 feet underground with dirt up above you, looking above in the streets. And that's not something I'd like to do. But I thought that was outstanding, what they were doing there. They're making sure that when they do the undergrounding there, it doesn't interfere with Mark's future plans of putting storm drains in that area. So there's a lot of things you have to work around. So outstanding work on part of PG&E. And last but not least, I forgot what I was gonna say. Okay, I'm done.
So I, I also went to the community center ribbon cutting. And just to kind of piggyback off Ron said, the commercial kitchen they have there is just fantastic. It's, it's gonna be a huge benefit to this community. And maybe we can go back to some of the things we used to do. Attended several sewer meetings. Those are, I still, still think every two weeks. PG&E undergrounding, I, I went there and, as well. And, yeah, these kind of tells you why it's taking so long in that area, because normally, they don't have to go that deep. But to accommodate our storm drains, that's, that's why they had to go that deep. And, you know, Ron's right. I'm, I'm not real crazy. And, you know, looking up with the possibility of six feet of dirt over my head, at least not yet. So we also had our federal lobbyist here in town and spent some time with him and asking, you know, what our needs and wants were, and seeing what we can do with the way our government is right now. So we'll see where that goes. I did an interview with the Paradise, with the Chico Enterprise Record on the seven-year anniversary of the campfire. Maria's Mexican restaurant had, they were closed for a bit. She had some health issues, and she had another ribbon cutting. It was nice. Food is really good. Go by and check her out. PD had a drone demonstration. And this, this drone was really, really interesting. In a lot of communities, they're actually using it to go to, you know, calls that need reports and what have you. The drone can fly over. It's got red and, and blue lights that'll flash. It can emit a siren. It can talk to you. It is pretty amazing. Let's see. KCBS out of San Francisco, I, I did a early Saturday morning interview with them on the seven-year anniversary. Yesterday, I went to the Veterans Day event at the Vets Hall. Unfortunately, the news had it 11:30, but the event started at 11:00. So I did miss most of it, but I showed up. Parade of flags, put up the flags and took down. And that is one of my favorite things to do. And I'd like to thank Heidi. She really organizes all of that. And it's, it's kind of like herd and cats. So, you know, it's, it's not an easy task. So that's, that's me.
Well, I watched the fire department, one of the fire engines picking up flags. And I saw the kids from Ridgeview picking up flags. And the flag thing is a big deal. I didn't go to any meetings this past month. You know, I made a lot of trips to the skilled nursing facility to see my wife, who's doing well. Should be home soon. And that's it. But I do want to say, before I close and give up the microphone, I really appreciate the staff we have here in this town. I've been here for over 40 years. And this is a special place. And the work that Mark did and, and the rest of the team to make the Christmas light parade happen, to work with Doug and the people that are putting that together, was really great. And one of the things that didn't get mentioned, a lady was here with her daughter from Sacramento, offering to pay. A number of people, I know businesses, and I've shared this with Doug, have offered to pay or contribute to help make it happen. We don't have, there's no fee to enter your vehicle in the parade. All you have to do is donate some canned food or non-perishable food for the food banks. That's how Ricky McGregor started it, and that's how it continues. But there are people, like I shared with Doug, some people don't have the, don't have a truck to put in a parade or a car. They don't have the ability to do that. But they have the ability to write a check or to make a donation. And that's the way they participate. So I'm encouraging Doug and the committee or the people involved in this to accept those donations. You can buy more food for the food pantries. You can make, what I would encourage any citizen that's hearing this and that comes to the truck parade, light a truck parade, maybe consider making a donation to the VIPs. Our Paradise VIPs do all of the road closures on that thing. Mark's team got... Mark's team got a traffic plan and people to donate stuff. The, the deal is, uh, they just all do that on their own. They've recruited the Chico VIPs to help them so they have the manpower to do all this. And, uh, you know, they do a lot of good for our police department and our community. So if you wanna be involved in the truck parade, make a donation to, to the truck parade, you know. Uh, just show up at Ace Hardware that night and donate some food. Or make a donation to the VIPs, the Paradise VIPs, uh, that would help. I'm gonna keep living here, I love it here, you know, this is my home. So, Mark, you and your team, man, thanks a lot. And everybody else, it's all of our employees, you guys are doing a great job. You know, we've been through some rough times as a community here. You know, we've had some bad actors come into our town and do some damage to some of our, our folks. Um, our people weren't responsible for that. And, and the public needs to know that. We have good people working here, uh, they're dedicated, uh, many of them have been here since the fire. And, uh, everybody, you know, we're doing something, nobody's ever, there's no book, how do you rebuild a town? We had legislators in the state of California saying, should they even be allowed to rebuild? You know, that's the kind of stuff we were up against. And here we are, eleven, twelve thousand strong. And we're gonna keep, and the roads are great, although I will tell you, some of those cement that Franklin, you know, Knife Rivers up on Clark, some of those, you know, the other guys are, they should have a competition and they should, maybe get a prize for doing the best valve cover cement job, you know what I'm talking about? They're, they're, the roads are great, but people are speeding on those roads. People are going way too fast on these new roads, so slow down.
Okay. Future agenda items, anybody?
I have one. I would like to, Jen, on the next month's agenda, um, I would like to bring back, uh, Resolution Number twenty-four dash seventeen. And I would like us to talk about it. This has to deal with, uh, private road signs that intersect public roads, uh, some storm drain upgrades and, and, uh, evacuation route changeable message signs. I'd like to just have a conversation about that, uh, in light of the new long-term recovery plan update we're gonna do. Just see whether that's still a high priority. It's five million plus dollars that, let's just talk about it, if we could do that next month.
Okay. Town, uh, town manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, you have a couple of things real quick. Wanna highlight that the building department, really the building system audit is now available online. So on our site, the town's website, instead of having people make a PRA request, I thought it was important to just post it, which we did. So that's available for everyone to, uh, to view and peruse. And I, I think it'll really explain the decisions that I made. As your town manager, I want you to see that and understand my perspective. And then to, uh, piggyback on the vice mayor, we really do have a fantastic staff. And so I've been in municipal county government for almost forty years. I know I don't look that old, um, hopefully. Nice try.
Good try.
Not as good as Barry, but that's all right.
So I actually used to work for, uh, Mr. Clausen down there at the Chico Police Department. Appreciate his, uh, leadership on everything. But I have, uh, come to know some really extraordinary staff. And I'm going to tell, um, this council and this community, you have not just a fantastic staff, you have an exemplary staff. So working in a recovery zone, um, it's almost unprecedented, as you mentioned. It's not only challenging, um, it is extraordinarily difficult. And I just wanna say that time and time again, that this staff, our staff rises to the occasion every single time. I just want to acknowledge their hard work, their excellent work and their commitment to this community because it makes all the difference in the world. So I want you to know that as well. And that's my report.